I'd like to call to order the October 16, 2012, regular agenda for the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. I would invite you to stand if you choose for our invocation. It will be led by Commissioner Melinda Hill.
If you choose, please pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity for us to come together. We thank you for the opportunity you have given us as Commissioners to represent this fine city. Thank you for the citizens that live in this community. We thank you for our military that put their lives on the line so each of us may have freedom. Lead, God, and direct us as we conduct the business of this city. In your name we pray. Amen.
If you'd join me as we pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Shaller, please call roll.
Commissioner Dunning is absent. Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
Do we have any awards or recognitions that you have?
No, Mayor, I do not.
I have a couple, if you don't mind. We have one of the unique cities in, not only in Kentucky, but in the entire United States that has a full-time professionally accredited police, fire, and public works division. And we'd like to congratulate our Public Works Department, who won two of the American Public Works Association Projects of the Year Award this year. We won in the stormwater category for the improvements on South Park Drive. And on Old Morgantown Road, we won for the road category. So I want to congratulate Jeff Lashley and the entire crew at our Public Works Department for the hard work that they did. And I know that the citizens will notice that, those improvements there. As far as another award and recognition, we have someone from Senator McConnell's office tonight bringing us some greetings.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. My name is Holly Lewis. I'm with the United States Senator Mitch McConnell's office. Senator McConnell asked that I be with you this evening to read a letter of congratulations on the bicentennial. Dear citizens of Bowling Green, congratulations as you celebrate the bicentennial of the city of Bowling Green. Settled by America's earliest pioneers in the late 18th century and named after Bowling Green Square in New York City, Bowling Green was incorporated in 1812. Over the last two centuries, the people of Bowling Green have upheld the rich traditions and legacies of those pioneers and exemplified the very best of what Kentucky has to offer. You have kept Kentucky's history alive and represent our future. My best wishes for a successful and happy bicentennial celebration. Sincerely, Mitch McConnell, United States Senate. Thank you again for allowing me to be here on behalf of Senator McConnell.
Thank you, Holly, for bringing that to it. Please tell the Senator how much we appreciate the work he's done for Bowling Green, too. And the last item under our awards and recognitions, many of you may notice on our wall over here, we have several items that were brought to us through our Sister City program from Kawainishi, Japan. The Convention and Visitors Bureau hosted a delegation from Kawainishi, and those are some of the gifts that they brought to us. The long wall hanging is a poem written by the Tata family, along with some of the other items that the Tata family brought. The plate is from the mayor of Kawainishi. And the tee-shirt is the city mascot. And yes, that's my granddaughter, after who they fashioned that mascot there. So forgive me for doing that, but thank you so much.
She's adorable.
Yes, that's true. We can vote on that if you like. Are there any other awards and recognitions? All right. Mr. City Manager, do we have any comments tonight?
I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. We have on the agenda the approval of amendments from the October 2, 2012 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. We have at this moment a time for public comments. If anyone in the audience would like to step forward with a comment about an item that is not on tonight's agenda, please feel free to step forward. We do have a three-minute limit for our comments. If you'd like to speak, please step forward to the microphone. If you would, please identify yourself and who you're with.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Wilkerson and Commissioners. My name is Juan Peña. I'm a field supervisor with the Kentucky Commission on Human Rights. Thank you for the opportunity to just briefly speak about the work that we have been doing at the commission, also to a new group that we had formed early last year. As you may know, the Kentucky Commission on Human Rights is responsible for the enforcement of the Kentucky Civil Rights across the state of Kentucky. Also, we have a statutory obligation to increase awareness of any housing issues or needs that we see in the community. Early last year, the commission and other government and non-government agencies came together and formed a group called the Kentucky Fair Housing Task. And this task force with the purpose to be there as a resource for communities, for city governments, and also learn more about the housing needs of the communities. I guess today was our fifth meeting that we have had, and we chose Bowling Green to come here because one of our goals is to go out to communities across the state to learn more about the communities' needs. Throughout our meetings, we're trying to identify some of the impediments to fair housing. As you may know, the Kentucky Fair Housing laws prohibit discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, disability, familial status, sex, and national origin. Those are the protected class under the Kentucky Civil Rights Act and the Fair Housing Act. Again, the group has identified a couple impediments that we see that are in need. And one thing we'd like to do is to encourage local governments or county governments to adopt two specific laws that think it would help to improve the lives of the community residents, not just in Bowling Green, but across the state. One is the passage of the, I'm sorry, the passage of the, I have my information here, Uniform Residential Landlord Tenet Act. I will have Ms. Kyle Chaffin to talk briefly about that law, the importance of this law. Based on the research done by the Kentucky Housing Corporation, it talks about that one of the impediments to fair housing, again, is the lack of a residential landlord act across the state. And with this law, it will really help many families across the state and also in Bowling Green. But this law is, again, has to be passed locally. The other part that we'd like to increase awareness is we have seen an increase of discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation. As you may know, that early this year, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development passed a ruling called the LGBT Rule. And this rule prohibits discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. This law became in fact in March, and it prohibits discrimination or prohibits for landlord who receives federal head money indirectly or directly to discriminate against someone on the basis of sexual orientation. Again, we encourage your city to look at these two items for future considerations. We believe that's very important to the community and for the citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Peña. You have a comment, too, and your name is?
Good evening. My name is Kyle Chaffin, and I work for the Fair Housing Council, based out of Lexington. Fair Housing Council is a nonprofit organization that provides legal assistance to housing discrimination victims. I am here to encourage as well the passage of the Uniform Residential Landlord Tenet Act for many different reasons. One of the main ones being that some of the calls that we receive from counties in which ERTA is not passed will be from individuals that have been treated unfairly, but they're due to little protection from landlord and tenant law. Many of them feel that it's a fair housing issue, and they will file complaints of discrimination, whereas it's really not discrimination under the Fair Housing Act. I think the passage of ERTA would really curb a lot of wasted resources and time in investigating these complaints, because you can see on the forefront with that type of protection if it's a fair housing issue or not. I also think it's great for both landlords and tenants, because it provides such detailed policies and procedures of the responsibilities on both parts of the parties. It holds accountability to the landlords to provide safe sanitary housing, which I feel we all think are important, as well as accountability on the tenant's part to maintain a property. So just wanted to keep it brief, but thank you all for your time.
Ms. Danner, you got to speak, too.
Hi, my name is Dana Beasley Brown, and I am a member of Kentuckyans for the Commonwealth and a resident of Bowling Green. And this was timely for me to find out just this morning that the Kentucky Task Force on Fair Housing was going to come tonight, because when I found out, I was actually at a local family's apartment where the mom, she's on disability and on a fixed income. And she received a letter on October 9 that she was going to be evicted and had to be out in 10 days. And the reason is because, written on the eviction notice, was that they had allowed a man who was banned from the premises to visit their apartment. Because she's on a fixed income, we were not able to find an apartment just like that. She only has about $600 a month total to live on, and right now she pays about $350 a month in rent. We called several places that specifically tailor to folks on a fixed income, and they are on a month-long waiting list. We called about six. And 10 days, frankly, is just not a lot of time for a lot of people. And unfortunately, because we do not have ERTA, the law stipulates that whatever a lease says, whatever the lease stipulates is the time given to a tenant to be vacated, that's what they're allowed to be given. So it could be as little as three days to 30 days. It just depends on what's in the lease. And so in this woman's particular instance, it would really help her if she had the ability to have at least 30 days' notice. So I just thank the task force for coming and bringing up this timely issue. And this is just happening every day to families all over the city. And I just would really encourage all of you to look at the Kentucky Housing Corporation's report about the impediments to fair housing and how ERTA can really help that, and as well just to dig in how we could really maybe solve some of these problems that are affecting and really harming a lot of good people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that the Bowling Human Rights Commission doesn't have a director at this point. If you have issues like that with regard to the items that you spoke, we'll refer you to that commission to work through those issues and to deal with that, and then they can contact one of us perhaps to sponsor something if someone on the board felt important to do so. If there's any other public comments, thank you. First item on the agenda is Municipal Order 2012-184.
Municipal Order approving the appointments of Dr. Gary Virst and Chris Palmer to the Bowling Green Community Tree Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Is there any discussion? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-185.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Ryan C. Burnham to the position of Police Sergeant in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe.
I would ask Chief Hackens to come forward and put into nomination a name for promotion.
Doug?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Mayor Wilkerson and Commissioner, I am honored to be here today to bring before you my recommendation to promote Officer Ryan Burnham to the position of sergeant. I am wearing a tie for this special occasion, as the mayor pointed out earlier. Also, with Ryan tonight are his daughter, Ally. His wife couldn't be here tonight, but I think he's brought also many other family members and friends. If you're here to support Ryan, raise a hand.
Wow.
That's most of the crowd tonight, absolutely. Amen. Couple of things. Tell a short story about Ryan before, tell about his career at the Bowling Green Police Department. Knew Ryan was going to be a police officer before he did, perhaps. Ryan was working at Kroger on Scottsville Road, and this was a number of years ago. And not sure how he knew I was a police officer, other than I just looked like a police officer. But he was working Kroger, and I think he might even have been working security at the time. And I was in line, and I was in plainclothes, and Ryan reminds me I was buying dog food. And he looked at me, and to verify, he goes, "Aren't you a police officer?" And I said, "Yes." And he said, "That lady right there," there were two ladies just leaving the store, he thinks, he said, "I think they have been involved in some illegal activity. I think they're passing some bad checks." And so me, being the dutiful police officer, engaged at least one of the women in the parking lot while the other one got away. But we did, through Ryan's hard work with his security work at Kroger, was able to identify and catch some women that in fact were serial passers of forged checks. And so this was before he became a police officer, but I knew then he was going to make a good one. He's proven me right. Ryan got hired July 19 of 2004 and has, by all accounts, been an excellent police officer during his career to this point. He's involved in the agency in a number of ways, on a number of different special kinds of teams, if you will. He's involved in our critical response team, which, as you all know, is very much like a SWAT team, or a version of a SWAT team, if you will. He's a member of our Honor Guard, which has the distinction in the honor of serving in a number of important events and roles in our community and others. And most recently, the Honor Guard has served at a couple of police officers that were killed in the line of duty in their funerals. They do important work like that. Also, Ryan is a police training officer and helps train now younger officers, now that he's got quite a bit of experience under his belt. And right before I came up here, he reminded me that recently he became a certified firearms instructor. So he's now become part of our training staff as well. Not as important, perhaps, as the involvement inside the department, he's also involved in the community and has served on the Martin Luther King Committee. As we all know, they're the committee that puts on the Martin Luther King events every year, and he has served on that committee and continues to do so. Also is involved in the family business of Burnham &amp; Sons Funeral Home and works there as well. But perhaps one of the things that's most important to me, and that by all accounts, by the men and women who work with him, by the supervisors who work with him, he demonstrates a great deal of leadership, both, I guess, in a formal sense, but certainly in an informal sense. He is an informal leader among the men and women he works with. But on our critical response team, he is also in a leadership role there as well. And all of these qualities and many, many more that I won't go into tonight have given me every reason to believe that Ryan will be an excellent supervisor. And in the competitive process, he did very well, both in the testing and in the oral boards. And as a result of the culmination of all of that information and much more, I ask that you vote to ratify his promotion tonight. And Ryan, if you're here, please stand up, please. Thank you. Thank you very much.
No questions, no comments. Looks like it might work, Ryan. I don't know. Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations. Municipal Order 2012-186.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Carrie L. Crawford, Joshua G. Stiles, and Lior A. Young to the position of Communications Dispatcher in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebbe.
One of the more difficult jobs in our city is that of a dispatcher. We traditionally have a number of vacancies in that difficult position. We're here tonight to fill three of those. We went through a process. We had 66 apply to be a communication dispatcher, and from that, we distilled who we feel are the best, and then three individuals, Carrie Crawford, Joshua Stiles, and Lior Young. I believe all three are here.
Stand up. We've got to put you on camera here. Congratulations. Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations. And you are free to slip out if you want to, and I've seen through the rest of this. Municipal Order, excuse me, Number 2012-187.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Sabrina E. Johnson to the position of Community Center Coordinator, and Jenna M. Smith to position of Special Populations Instructor in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved. Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbe.
One of the things that makes our Park and Rec Department so special is we provide more than traditional ball sports. We try to reach out to different populations in the community. One population we deal with is the Special Pops. The other is a community center, in which we provide specialized programs to a part of the community. We had openings in both of those positions. We went through a competitive process, and tonight, we're here to recommend to you that Sabrina Johnson and Jenna Smith be approved for appointment to these two positions. I'm told by Michael that they're both here.
Congratulations. Any comments, questions? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations again, and please don't feel any obligation to stick around if you want to slip out. Municipal Order 2012-188.
Municipal Order approving the career path advancement of Jeffrey S. Salings to position of Operations Technician 2 in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebbe.
Last meeting, Jeff Lashley gave a pithy but funny appointment, promotional appointment. I would ask Jeff to come up now and to make a similar promotion for Mr. Salings.
First thing you need to do is define pithy, Mr. DeFebbe.
Short. Short. Short, but wise.
I don't know. I think I might have broke the mold on that other one. So we've been on a roll lately, and I'm privileged to make this recommendation tonight for the promotion of Jeff Salings to Operation Maintenance Technician Level 2. Jeff was hired in October '07 as a Laborer 2. By April, he had completed his requirements to be promoted to the OMT-1 position. So April of '08, he was promoted. Jeff works in the street maintenance area, and according to his supervisors, he's an excellent worker. He has good initiative. He's helpful and assists others, and he's valuable in training. Also, he has a good personality and a very good work ethic. So with those qualities, we feel that he's good for this promotion. Jeff's operated all kinds of equipment, from small to large stuff. Drives dump trucks. Has worked with street repair, worked with signal maintenance. So he's pretty well seen most of the activities and done a lot of the stuff that we do through Public Works. One thing I'm very proud of Jeff about is we had a vacancy on the Employee Insurance Committee, and Jeff did step up and volunteer for that. And I'm pleased with his decision to represent the Public Works Department on that committee. So with that, he shows a lot of initiative and leadership. Jeff's in attendance tonight, as well as Supervisor Mike Piller.
I see Mike sitting down and Jeff standing up.
So, again, it's my extreme privilege to make this recommendation tonight, and thank you for your consideration.
Congratulations, Jeff. Good work. Any comments or discussion? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations again. Municipal Order 2012-189.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2013-11 for Hewlett-Packard server equipment from A-Link Technologies LLC of Austin, Texas, in the amount of $27,305.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe.
One of the important software programs we have is called N-Route. That's used to support a public safety system. In order to run that software, we need good servers. We're here tonight to purchase the servers needed to run that software. We went out to bid, had seven bidders, and the lowest responsible bid is A-Link Technology of Austin, Texas. Lynn Hartley, CIO, is here. If you have any questions?
Any comments or discussion, questions? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-190.
Municipal Order authorizing the continuation of software subscription and maintenance services from OpenText Incorporated in the amount of $26,126.02.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe.
We, as a city, maintain a lot of important documents and are in constant need of software to archive information and documents. We're here tonight to ask you to approve the software maintenance service for what is known as OpenText. It's sole source, and Lynn is here. If you have any questions about the actual product or how we plan to use it.
Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-191.
Municipal Order authorizing a contract through noncompetitive negotiations with James R. Adams and Associates of Bowling Green, Kentucky, for the completion of the signed inventory and retro reflectivity project in the amount of $41,964.
So moved.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe.
The Federal Highway Administration is very much into uniformity of traffic devices and signs, as well as the type of reflectivity they have in trying to standardize that. So we're required to put together a database of all of our signs and make sure they meet the federal highway requirements. Because we thought it was more efficient, we went out to private contract and are here tonight to ask you to approve a contract for $41,964 to hire James Adams to help us complete this task. Jeff Lashley is here. If you have any questions about how Mr. Adams and his company is working on this project?
Comments or questions? I know Mr. Adams already did the pilot project on this, and the completion of that. And thank you for your service on the Human Rights Commission, too. Any other questions? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-192.
Municipal Order accepting and authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement on behalf of the city of Bowling Green with the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet for Federal Victims of Crime Act 2012 funds in the amount of $35,978.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbe.
This is our 12th year the city of Bowling Green has received funding under the Federal Victims of Crime Act, or VOCA. It helps us pay partly for the salary of our advocate position, which is April Fulcher. She is here tonight. If you have any questions, it's a great program. It helps those who have been victimized by crime and helps them to adapt to crime in their lives. If you have any questions, April's here.
April's been here all 20 years of the program. Is that correct?
19 of the 20.
19 of the, oh, this starts the 20.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. May I make a comment? Sure, ma'am. I don't have a question. I've said this from the bench before, and April's been here at times and not been here at other times. I know other members of the board have had the pleasure of working with April in a professional inside the police department position. I've had the pleasure of working with her on the outside with clients that I have. And while I don't publicly make a lot of comments about the conduct or the work of city employees, every time this comes up, I feel motivated to. I don't know of as challenging a job in the city of Bowling Green as the job that April has, to deal with victims of crime and have to be as involved in the emotional side of it that she has to be on a daily basis. And to do it as well as she does is something that I think as a city that we should all be proud of. I think April should be proud of.
I think April should be proud of herself, and I think that the Police Department should be proud to have her. I know that there are similar positions in similar agencies and similar cities. And I have had the opportunity to work with them, but never have I had the opportunity to work with anybody who does the job as well as April does. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. I think we all share that sentiment. Thank you so much. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012-193.
Municipal order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Riverbend Landing Subdivision, Section 3.
So moved. Second. Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash, Mr. Febo.
This is to accept into the city domain approximately .32 miles of roadway in what is known as Section 3 of the Riverbend Landing Subdivision. Under the existing protocol, developer has to meet our specs. And once those are met, we agree or not agree to accept this into our maintenance domain. Jeff Lashley is here, if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012-194.
Municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into grant agreements for select neighborhood action program grants with various neighborhoods.
So moved. Second. Motion by Waltrip, second by Nash, Mr. Febo.
One of the unique things about our community is that we attempt to provide services through the structure of neighborhoods. Thus, the reason for the renaming of HCD to Neighborhood and Community Services. One of the creative programs that we do is providing incentive grants to neighborhood groups to do projects within their neighborhood themselves. And those are known as SNAP grants. I would ask Karen Foley, who's the overseer of this particular program, to come forward and to discuss with you all the recommendations for awarding of the SNAP grant fund, which totaled $25,000.
Hello again. Tonight, actually for the first time, we have money in the budget that we don't have requests for. This is the smallest number of SNAP grant applicants that we've ever had. And it's also the smallest total request of, total requests. So we're in sort of uncharted territory with this group tonight. However, we are recommending for funding, full funding of all of the projects that were submitted. None of these are first-time applicants, unfortunately. There are two applications that I noted that had they been able to apply for more money, had they not been capped as repeat applicants, they probably would have. And I just mention that because there is money that's available that's not accounted for. We don't have a plan just yet.
It is accounted for, it's just not been requested.
That's right. We don't have any plans right now for that balance. I think we're thinking of some things, but we don't have anything hard and firm to talk about. So tonight, we're just wanting to fund these six projects. And as a side note, I do want to mention that, you know, a few years ago, when we started tightening the budget on these, we did put some project restrictions in place. And I think even though we have asked folks and let them know they could come back and have lifted some of those restrictions, I think basically we've kind of shut off the valve, so to speak. And I don't know if we need to prime that to get the requests flowing again. I'm not really sure.
Karen, do the, would the procedure allow groups to apply even after we do this tonight? If the group is aware of this now, and can we do that?
We could certainly entertain an additional grant cycle.
I would like to see maybe there are some of those neighborhood associations just didn't get it in, didn't think about it. And obviously, neighborhoods are very important. So if there's a way that that could happen, I believe that would be good.
They have a requirement to either match it with funds or in-kind contributions as well?
And it's just a 20% match. So it's not even, it's not even a dollar-for-dollar match. I think probably a couple of the projects that are already in here, the two in particular that I said probably would have asked for more if we had not restricted them from asking more, they are already matching theirs dollar-for-dollar. So, you know, it depends on each neighborhood group because the match does factor in for some as to how much that they will apply for. To be honest, there were a couple of applications I was expecting to see come in and didn't.
I was expecting one particular to come in that didn't.
Yes. There were at least a couple I thought I would see, and they didn't come in. So I don't know what the nature of that was. It could have been, you know, a timing thing, or they may have decided, well, we'll just hold off and try another time. One other thing I do want to mention by way of the program guidelines, about the same time that we did tighten on the project restrictions, we put into place this page here that talks about healthy neighborhoods and trying to impact the neighborhood image, the neighborhood management, neighborhood physical conditions, and what those sorts of strategies might be. And I don't know if by trying to encourage that, if that may be discouraged some folks from some projects because they just couldn't think of it in those terms or they weren't sure. And to be honest, you know, a few years ago, we were looking at, not necessarily discouraging applicants, but we were looking at trying to bring the amount of requests into the amount of funds. And we've apparently been successful in doing that.
But I know, I've been through the training that you provide, and I know all that's spelled out.
Yes.
If you can just get them to the training, I think obviously that would clear those issues up for them.
And then we do have some neighborhoods that, you know, a number of years ago, they kind of, they came up with a phase of things that they wanted to see, that they wanted to put in place. And in large part, those groups, I mean, they are finished. You know, if they were landscaping different areas or if they were doing signposts in different areas or they were doing entry projects, you know, they have completed those. So of course, you know, they're not coming back with, you know, okay, oh yes, by the way, we'd like to do this other thing. You know, a lot of them are pleased with the SNAP that they've received in the past and don't really have anything else to ask for. So that's, you know, this is year 13, so.
So our success has brought us to this point.
And I'm not advocating, obviously, spending money that we don't need to. But I know, and I think we all do, neighborhoods that have projects that they'd like to do, that they should do. And I think there's still many needs out there.
I agree.
Any other discussion, questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012-195.
Municipal order approving an amendment to the grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for 2009 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program Funds and authorizing a contract through non-competitive negotiations with Motorola of Schaumburg, Illinois, under Kentucky State pricing for the purchase of additional Motorola radios and equipment in a total amount not to exceed $59,500 for the fire department. So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip, Mr. Febo.
In year 2009, the City of Bowling Green received approximately $500,000 from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. We have some residual funds left over. Our firemen have made an amendment request, and we believe that will be granted to Homeland Security to use some of that residual funds to purchase additional radios that will be P-25 compliant, which will be, will fit with our new strategy for the 800 megahertz radio system. It's, we're requesting $59,500, of which the city has to put in a 20% match. Subchief Todd Napier is here, if you have any questions. I mean Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief? Something like that.
Todd, I was wondering, were that?
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012-196.
Municipal order approving and authorizing contracts with Morgan Keegan and Company Incorporated and JJB Hilliard WL Lyons LLC to serve as financial advisors for the City of Bowling Green related to the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2013-A, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5,455,000, and general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2013-B, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2,215,000. So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip, Mr. Febo.
For the sake of efficiency and explanation, Municipal Order 13, 14, and 15 are all in the same family of action. By way of macro overview, 13 is asking your permission to hire two fiscal advisors to help us do some refinancing on some old bonds, as well as some leases. Goal being to reduce overall costs, which we believe refinancing will save approximately $400,000 between now and FY 2000. Ordinance 14, item 14, is the actual bond ordinance authorizing this refinancing. And Municipal Order 15, number 15, is the actual sale of bonds. Jeff Misler, who's been working on this for some time, is, will answer any questions on 13, 14, or 15.
Comments or questions? Refinancing saves money, doesn't extend the term of the debt.
Exactly. Well said.
Anyone else? Okay, we're voting on the hiring of Hilliard Lyons on this municipal order. Please call the roll.
And Morgan Keegan.
And Morgan Keegan, I'm sorry. It was two of yous.
They're sharing the responsibility and the fee for the refinancing.
Can I, I will make one comment.
Sure.
There was going to be two bond issues, but they agreed to go together and work together on one, which saves us money on bond ratings and a lot of, a lot of other things. And it looks better us going to the market one time in November versus two times, so.
And that's the Series A and B divisions.
Yeah, and if you'll give me just a quick minute, too, on that, this one's been somewhat of like working a puzzle. But where we tried to stay within our, what we call our bank qualified money, that $10 million I've talked to you before, which gives us about anywhere from 20 to 30 basis points savings on our interest rate usually, maybe sometimes more. So this one's been like working a puzzle. Two of these were already bank qualified, which we could just designate again and just more or less carry over and not have to count them again. The other three we're converting to bank qualified, which gives us an even better rate than when they were originally issued as non-bank qualified. So it's been a challenge, but I think we've got it all worked out. We had to drop one off as of Friday. I apologize for the revision, but it had a prepayment premium that kind of ended up exceeding the projected savings that we had planned for. So we dropped it off. And that was the depot debt, which we share with the county anyway. So it would have been shared savings, but just didn't end up coming to fruition, so.
The only comment I would have is obviously, again, a way to congratulate staff on, again, trying to be as efficient with the money and recognizing these things and bringing them forward. Very much appreciate it.
Jeff deserves a lot of the credit. He keeps his eye on the money, and he comes to us when he thinks there's an opportunity to reduce our costs. And this is one of his opportunities. Probably, this is probably the third time in the last six years.
Yeah, and our next candidate that we're going to be watching is our 2007 GO. Those would not be callable until 2017, but we could do an advanced refunding. Of course, you've got to look at the escrow, and that's involved. And that's another comment. The 2004 A, you all remember, we did most of that back in the spring. This knocks out all the rest of that, but it is an advanced refunding. Therefore, it had a little escrow that we had to build for it. But the 2007 is one I'm still watching to see when we could possibly do that one. So I bring that one to you. I keep thinking of things, I'm sorry, but.
We don't like debt, so we're trying to get rid of it.
The next.
I was going to say, don't apologize for getting this out of debt.
The next budget amendment that you'll probably see in our second meeting in November, I'm going to propose paying off the 14th Avenue debt on that one. We've got it down about $140,000 payoff. I'm going to propose we use cash. And I think we could save $40,000, $50,000 on that one because it was going to go on until another two or three years. So, actually, 2017. So that's another one that we're going to be bringing to you to go ahead and pay off. It's a small piece, I thought we ought to do it, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Now for the short one, ordinance number 2012-38, first reading.
Bear with me. Ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds and ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of one, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2013-A, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5,455,000 for the purpose of refunding the outstanding City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation bond, Series 2002-A, refunding a portion of the outstanding City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation bonds, Series 2004-A, and refunding the outstanding master lease purchase agreement dated as of August 31, 2007, between Chase Equipment Leasing Incorporated and the city, the proceeds of which financings in turn finance the costs of the acquisition, construction, and installation of various public projects in the city. And two, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2013-B, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2,215,000 for the purpose of refunding the outstanding master lease purchase agreement dated as of October 7, 2010, between Chase Equipment Finance Incorporated and the city, and the outstanding lease agreement dated as of June 30, 2005, and the outstanding lease agreement dated as of June 30, 2005, between Branch Banking and Trust Company and the city, the proceeds of which in turn finance the costs of the acquisition, construction, and installation of various public projects in the city. Approving the forms of the bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchasers for the purchase of the bonds following the advertised sale of the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
Amen. Motion by Nash.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Hill.
I still.
I thought you had to take an intermission or something through that.
No further discussion. Please call the rule.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And Municipal Order 2012-197.
Municipal Order approving the advertisement for, excuse me, Municipal Order approving the advertisement for bids and distribution of a preliminary official statement for the purchase of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2013A, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5,455,000, and City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2013B, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $202,215,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Unless there's any discussion, please call the rule.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 2012-39.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 1.56 acres from RM3 multifamily residential to GB general business located at 603 Old Morgantown Road, presently owned by PSM Enterprises LTD, with Reddo Salic as contract vendee.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip.
Steve Hunter is here from the Planning Commission. If you have any questions about this request.
Any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Mr. Hunter?
Thank you.
The lotting question that's asked to be rezoned, next to it is commercial or residential?
Let me check my map. One is commercial, and it's actually office, but we count that as a commercial district. The other side of the property is still RM3.
What about further on down the road from it?
You know, I'll just jump from here, from off my map, from Johnson to Catherine, OPR, public, multifamily, office, multifamily, office. So it's a mix. And then further up the road from Johnson, you see a lot of neighborhood business scattered. It's a mix, neighborhood business, office, multifamily, general business on the street.
As I look at the map, on one side of the street, it's RM3 from Parkhurst to College View, with the exception of one property, if my map is correct.
Correct.
And on the other side of the street, going two properties over from the lotting question, going all the way down to Media Drive, it is RM3 with the exception of two properties.
That is correct.
I've had this conversation before, and I don't know where to go with it. When do we allow businesses to stop encroaching on our neighborhoods, and especially in our older neighborhoods, especially in our neighborhoods that are less advantaged than some?
Kind of the short answer is we don't, under the old conference of plan. Now, that night, we had this hearing on September 20. It was our last hearing using the old 1990 Conference of Plan. On page three of your staff report, if you have that in front of you, it's important, we put policy LU2 in your staff report, which is kind of the meat of the old Conference Plan. And Commissioner Nash, the very last sentence on page three says, compatibility has to do with actual land use and design measures taken to mitigate any adverse impacts on surrounding existing development. Compatibility does not mean that any development must be the same use or density as the surrounding existing density. So what our old plan in a sense says, you can put any kind of use next to any kind of use as long as you have good enough binding elements to mitigate the adverse impacts of those, in a sense, incompatible uses. With our new Conference of Plan that went into effect, we're now going to use a map. So to really answer your question is how we're going to stop that, is we now have a future land use map that we'll use from this day forward, that hopefully, if it's laid out well, we'll try to keep like uses with like uses. The days of just saying industrial can go next to multifamily simply because we've got a good enough set of binding elements are kind of gone with that new future land use map. However, the future land use map is littered with categories that are mixed use in nature, to do kind of an urban-style development. There's categories where you can mix industrial, residential, or commercial, or commercial, office, and residential. So some parts of town, it'll say commercial, and that's all that goes there. It'll say single-family, and that's all that would go there. But I can tell you, there's a lot of barriers that are labeled as mixed use in the new future land use map. So I think we'll see both scenarios as we move forward.
And I think we have mixed use on Old Morgantown Road. But the particular area that's asking to be rezoned here is right smack in the middle of what's left of what I would call the older residential area of Old Morgantown Road. If you go a little further down Morgantown Road towards Veterans, or not towards Veterans, but towards Morgantown Road, you find general business. If you go the other way on Old Morgantown Road, bringing it back towards the university and the railroad tracks, you're going to find plenty of business styles. I don't, it frustrates me to lose our older neighborhoods, and that what I feel like we say to the citizens who have stayed there, because we know what happens in older neighborhoods, we know what happened on Old Morgantown Road, and that is, as it started to change and become less advantaged, more people vacated. But for those people who have stayed there, what we say is, we're now going to stick a grocery store across the street or next door, despite the fact that you've been hanging on for a very long time. And it seems as if we're doing a disservice to the people who have not fled the area.
I understand. Of course, Planning Commission just sends you all a recommendation. This body's free to take whatever direction you all may want to on this zone change, but I can tell you the difficulty the Planning Commission had. There was opposition that night. I think we looked at 17 policies, the only policies that were really, that we could apply to a zoning of this nature. And it met all 17 policies, again, because the applicant did do a good job at trying to address all the policy directions that were there, land signage, green space, parking. So the applicant even made four commitments on the floor to even tighten their binding elements down even further. I think the Planning Commission's challenge was it met all 17 policies, and there were three policies that were clearly judgment calls, two dealt with lot coverage. And I think they felt like it was in compliance with the Conference of Plan, which is their state law directive, then, to approve, to make a motion to approve. Clearly, it's frustrating to them too, especially on a lot of zonings we do out in the county, where we do residential pockets surrounded by big agricultural areas. I think the hope is the new future land use map will give us better tools to work through that situation. But I'm not exactly sure what it would have shown on this strip through here. It may have shown this all as mixed. It may still show that as mixed for some day in the future. I would point out that the zoning map only tells half the story. When you turn, it should be the next page in your packet, when you look at the actual existing land use map, it's interesting, even though this is RM3, you can see a lot of the zoning, or the land use is actually single-family, you'll see yellow. So it's not really labeled zoning-wise, the right as the actual land use. And then you've got the church across the street that's clearly a commercial land use too. So it looks different when you look at the land use map than when you look at the zoning map. The zoning map clearly shows a lot of red, but then when you look at the land use map, you're looking at red, yellow, blue, purples, greens. That's the actual land use, where one is the actual zoning, and those don't always coincide. So the church is actually a commercial use. So Commissioner Nash, when you look at this property, you can look at the general neighborhood, but if you stand right at Virginia and look at it, you'd look commercial on one side, multifamily on the other side, commercial two doors down, and commercial across the street, catacorner one way, residential catacorner the other. You've got three big commercial pieces and five smaller residential pieces, if you just look what fronts Morgantown Road kind of at its front door. And that's what's difficult here.
But whether I look at either map.
There's residential.
What I see is more residential than I see commercial. And what I see is that we are punishing people who have stayed.
I understand.
I mean, one of the biggest issues that we deal with as a city is people who will leave areas and move to the county. And it feels to me, in this particular case, and each case has to be, you know, evaluated on its own merits, and I'm not suggesting that planning and zoning has done anything wrong, but I am saying that I'm frustrated by the idea that we talk about thriving neighborhoods from a city standpoint. We talk about continuing to invest in our older neighborhoods, but at the same time, we allow grocery stores to be planted right in the middle of, whether you look at either map.
Correct.
You see more residential than you see commercial.
And again, the old plan encouraged that style of development, or at least didn't discourage it. There were 17 policies, and there wasn't a policy I feel strong enough that the Planning Commission could have said, the commercial's just not allowed. And again, there's a lot of community feeling that in the old plan, that somehow mixed uses weren't allowed or shouldn't be allowed. But actually, the old plan, again, did encourage mixed uses. And again, if your binding elements were structured strong enough to mitigate those adverse impacts, it actually would say it's in compliance with the Conference of Plan, which, again, state law directs the Planning Commission to use and making these findings. I'm not really sure the three policies that were still in the noncompliance are really that strong a policies, even if this body felt like, hey, we would like to maybe do something different than what the Planning Commission recommended. Those were really borderline policies to not be in compliance. The lot coverage was off by 2%, and so we stuck it in noncompliance, but, you know, they committed the 70% lot coverage, which is a lot smaller than commercial, and the actual lot was going to be 68%. So that's really close. And then, you know, there really wasn't a real solid policy that said there shouldn't be residential in this, or commercial in a residential neighborhood. I hope the new plan fixed that, but I'm not confident. We're going to go through mock hearings this week with the Planning Commission at our place, and the first four cases we pulled, funny enough, were older cases that were approved under the old plan to look at them under the new plan. And one of the things we found right off the bat is a zone change that was commercial in a single-family area that was actually turned down. The new map actually shows multifamily in a single-family residential area. The new map has some pieces built into it as it transitions uses, where it might go from a single-family neighborhood to moderate density to commercial. And you look in that moderate density core there, and you go, wow, it's right on top of single-family neighborhood. So the new map does actually encourage apartments on the fringe of a single-family neighborhood. So the map may be a challenge for us too, because it was built with this intention that we transition uses. We just don't say it stops here, goes from single-family to highway business. It goes, densities move up the chain before we get to the more intense commercial-industrial. That's going to be a challenge for us.
What are the, and I just, I don't remember. What are the operating hours for this?
The operating hours, there was some discussion with one of the applicant, or one of the people that were in opposition, I think, asked the applicant to make a redefine that. And I'm not sure there was actually, they agreed to this set of operating hours. I don't think there were.
I thought it was 7:00 to 8:00 a.m.
I'm double checking here.
I don't see it on the binding elements.
There was some discussion in the minutes about a commitment to operating hours, but I do not think the applicant made a commitment on operating hours.
And when they.
The proposed business hours, but again, there's no obligation to honor that, is 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday.
And then they did not make a formal commitment in the way of binding elements on the floor that night, if I recall. There was a lot of back and forth between the applicant and a few neighbors about those issues, hours of operation, things that might be sold in the grocery store, that kind of thing. And I think they made a commitment there to sell no alcohol, but there was, talk about lottery tickets, and there was a lot of back and forth, but he only made a formal commitment on four specific items.
Does the conversation also go to delivery times at this place?
There was discussion about traffic and vehicle movements and trash pickup, but no commitments on that either in the binding elements that I saw.
If I can, before we, I'll give you a reminder, you'll get every time on one of these. Since this is a rezoning, you cannot simply vote no on a recommendation to approve a rezoning from Planning Commission. You can reject those recommendations only by making independent findings of fact, that would be findings different from those findings made by a Planning Commission to support your recommendations to overturn them. So we talk about the spill every time this issue comes up on potentially close calls. So you can't simply do a no vote to override this. You've got to make independent findings of fact about why the Planning Commission was incorrect.
But we would vote on this recommendation, and if that vote fails, then we would have to come back with another one.
Yeah, and of course, we've always said before, you can always do, I'm not sure if there's no attorneys here tonight. I'm not sure if you want to consider table it for, let the attorneys get here to make arguments. It's kind of, I'm kind of surprised that there's no attorneys here tonight.
There was only an attorney for the applicant. The neighborhood explored hiring an attorney, but they did not hire an attorney. The neighborhood was represented by themselves.
So, I mean, that's an option. You can always table it and bring it back in. And in the meantime, have your own independent findings ready to, because there's not anything ready to go tonight, unless you've got something in your mind. But I just want to make sure everybody understands, you're right, you can't simply vote no. If you vote no, then you've got to come back with independent findings of fact and conclusions that are different. And I guess they give you some recommendations, maybe those two or three.
Three policies that we thought weren't in compliance, obviously would be a starting point for you all to make a discussion. LU2, though, is also a policy about the binding elements. You know, again, if you all thought the binding elements weren't strong enough.
Would the issue of going back to the hours of operation and traffic in and out at nighttime hours, would that be a, would that be a reason to have them come back? I don't understand.
It's a great question. You guys, the way I understand it, Gene may jump in here, and my attorney, Hampton Moore, is not here, but you guys vote on the recommendation forward to you from the Planning Commission. That zone change recommendation is conditioned on that general development plan, which is that statement of binding elements. I don't think we can change binding elements that have been brought to you. If they've said these are our 10 binding elements, those are the ones you guys are to consider as a condition of the zoning approval. But that's what's interesting, it's a condition of the zoning approval. But for you all to have the applicant come back and ask if they would add three more binding elements, I'm not sure we would do that.
And that's usually the issue, just from the Planning Commission hearing itself, because we don't approve or review or approve binding elements. They come to us as part of the rezoning.
As a condition.
I don't know, and there may be, but I don't know of another business over there that operates late night or obviously 24 hours.
Not that familiar. I guess some of the discussion that night, Commissioner Waltrip, was about a grocery store, and I think some of the discussion was it was going to be not a Minute Mart, not a convenience store, it was going to be a grocery store with kind of normal hours that, and I'm looking, they actually said it would be a grocery store, but I don't even think that commitment was made.
But normal hours of a grocery store are what?
Well, again.
I mean, some grocery stores are open 24 hours.
Bigger chains, but I think some neighborhood stores, they seem to indicate would have hours that you saw in the minutes. There was some discussion, you know, of what our normal hours we think would be, but it was just discussion on the floor with no commitment. Hours of operation would have been good. I think the neighborhood was looking for stricter things in several areas besides just hours of operation, signage, the screening, uses. And again, they got into real specific uses of even what could be sold at the store. One neighbor brought that up.
Gene, how would we handle, and maybe only from my perspective, but how would we handle the issue that, it's my concern that there is no binding element in regards to hours?
I'm not sure I've ever seen a binding element.
Okay.
Regarding hours.
You haven't seen one? Those are typical, yeah. Hours of operation are fairly standard on commercial zonings.
But not from this.
Not on this one. Typically, neighborhood rezonings and general business rezonings, we tend to do, light industrial too.
I know we did one over on Nutwood or Magnolia, which was in, on the fringe of a residential area, across the street from residential area, and we were concerned about the traffic in and out at odd hours.
We've done 10 o'clock, midnight, 1 a.m.
Yeah, the truck traffic.
9 o'clock, 7:00 p.m. Board of Adjustment sees a lot of those too, where we look at hours of operation almost every month on proposed uses. I guess if that's your desire to fine tune the binding elements, I would think you would either table it. We could talk with the applicant about his voluntary option to withdraw the case and maybe fine tune it as a courtesy to you all. Or you guys could take it one step further, and I guess your option to deny the rezoning is always there. At the first reading, it still gives the applicant an opportunity to withdraw the case, fine tune the case, bring it back. But I'd be glad to call the applicant and say, look, City Commission's struggling a little bit with your binding elements, they'd like you to add some things. And his only option, I think, would be to withdraw the case and refile it, and then try to address the items that you guys have raised. At this point, this is the case that's been brought your way.
And then it's refiled under the new Conference of Plan?
It would be refiled under the new Conference of Plan.
And how does that change?
I really have not reviewed that one. To be fair to them, I haven't pulled that and considered that. But my guess is this strip would be mixed use. These collector roads that sort of run through the city are typically labeled as mixed use in the new map.
And a second reminder, right now, I think we've got plenty of time. A reminder that it's 90 days, correct? 90 days after Planning Commission's final action, which I'm not sure whether that's approval of the minutes or approval that night, there's always dispute about when their final action is. If you don't act in 90 days, then this recommendation is approved.
It would be my proposal that it be tabled to see if the property owner would be willing to agree to a different set of binding elements. Before we go one step further, I'd rather see if we can't have a discussion about that.
Commissioner Nash, another interesting, just side note, the applicant, the contract vendee, is fine gentleman. I mean, he agreed to everything he was asked that night. And what I'm saying is, he seemed like he was interested in trying to put the best case forward, but he indicated, you know, grocery store was a new venture for them in this location. So I'm not sure he understood what all the. understood what all the pieces needed to be that we typically would have put in a set of binding elements for a general business rezoning. You could look down to the Dollar Stores, some other areas, and use those as a model, but I think they were trying to figure out how a neighborhood grocery store would function. They talked a lot about the character of the building and what it would look like, and the signage is extremely small, but you know, he just seemed like he was on the floor trying to figure all that out as opposed to these questions being raised a month before his case was filed, so he could have worked those in. So I thought he attempted to try to say yes to the things he could say yes to, but had these been raised maybe a month before. But the neighborhood, again, was working through their issues, and they get the case just two weeks before the hearing, and so they came forward and said, here's our issues. So it kind of all happened right here, close to midnight, by the way, on a very tough night.
What I'm trying to figure out, if I live across from that grocery and they're open until, I don't know, late hours, sleeping's going to be an issue. I mean, just the quality of life, and I'm not saying that I'm against the rezoning per se, but I'm saying that I would like to have something in there about the hours of operation.
What we really got sidetracked on, one of the neighbors really just raised traffic issues here after the road's been reconstructed, and there was a lot of discussion about how unsafe the road is, flooding issues, got the drainage basin there in the back. So it was kind of interesting that we spent a lot of time with one particular neighbor about flooding, accidents, EMS response. The hearing was, had a lot of issues raised in a short little window, if you read the minutes.
I read the.
And so that, all those were raised too at the same time about traffic issues.
So right now, we have a motion table?
Yeah, one final comment, and then I'll make a formal motion. I don't believe that you were suggesting, and I don't, but I want to be clear, you said you wanted to assure me that the applicant was a fine guy. I want to be clear, just in case there's any kind of misunderstanding, at no time is it my role to factor in who the person is who's asking, whether I like them, dislike them, whether they're a fine guy or whether they're not. And this applicant may very well be, but the issue that I have with this is not based upon who the applicant is.
I understand.
Or who the people in opposition are. You and I have worked together long enough that you know from day one of me sitting in the seat, I've been concerned about encroachment of commercial into residential areas.
And Commissioner Nash, my comment there was more that I think he would be very concerned about your all's concerns. Typically, we don't ask applicants to attend first or second readings at the parent governments. I think he'd be concerned and want to figure out how he could probably put those items in his binding elements. He just seemed of that nature. We didn't give him direction on that a month ahead of time, and we probably should have if we'd known hours of operation or a particular signage was a problem. The actual use is tricky, because the Conference Plan didn't discourage that, and.
Before you.
Oh, yeah.
And I'd be glad to call him and say, look, you need to come back for the first reading, maybe, or we need to maybe think about how we can retool your application and deal with the City Commission's concerns.
Well, after tonight, he will have a considerable amount of time, because we don't meet again for a while.
That's true.
It's November 20th, I believe it is.
Which is probably an untimely question, but I've been asked this question by a member of the public, and I said that I would pose this question tonight. But when we receive this information about the rezoning, sometimes, obviously, it doesn't include all of the principles in wanting to do that has submitted the rezoning. Is that something that you can provide, you don't provide, or what's your thoughts?
Yeah, the applicant's listed as PSM Enterprises LTD. You guys see LLCs, corporations constantly, co-applicants, contract vendees, property owners, all mixes of that nature. The statute says we're supposed to rely on the PVA data for adjacent property owner records when we send the letters and whatnot. The application has to be signed by the property owner. If the property owner's an LLC or a corporation, that's the property owner. Or if it's a husband and wife, or son and father, in care of, you guys have seen all those, we are required, whoever the property owner is to convey the property is who the applicant is. Now, clearly, some of these LLCs and different corporations, I think everyone's, hey, who's in the company and who's the principals? We typically know because we've met with, for example, I think in this case, it was Mr. Miller we met with several times, Mr. Beerman. But who's the actual principal, who's, you know, some nights are represented by a legal counsel, and they're the ones that are there on behalf of the applicants. But I think we put the applicant that the PVA shows as the legal property owner, and the principals come to light because they're at the meeting or they, you know, we've met with them. If that's something you all are interested in, we can try to put who those folks are, but sometimes, obviously, they want to keep that confidential, or again, they're represented by an attorney and.
It's public information on the Kentucky Secretary of State's website.
Well, interestingly enough, we'll look those up sometimes to assist in who can sign the binding elements, and it'll be an LLC with one name, and the other three names won't be shown. So we'll call the applicant, say, hey, so and so signed the, our main concern is so and so signed the application, signed the binding elements, and we don't see him listed here on the Secretary of State site. That's why we do some checking into that when we get the application. But usually, that's what we're looking for, is who's the one that actually signed the bottom line and the binding element, or are they actually a property owner that's legal to convey the property? But that's, you know, we usually find that out, and if that's a concern, we'll try to relate that to you all.
And if a citizen, let's say something came through and they wanted to know, they would go to the Secretary of State?
Yes.
Or, and/or the PVA, but there is a way?
The PVA lists the property owners, and, you know, you can see a corporation who it's mailed to sometimes, but the Secretary of State's typical, we go to double check LLCs and corporations.
They'll give you the officers and directors and registered agent.
Yeah, registered agent.
It's also filed at the Warren County Clerk's Office.
Yes.
The Teane County.
And the person that brought this up, again, you know, I had not, to be candid, and I thought a lot about it, but again, thought that it would, that the, knowing who all was involved in it was important to him and to several that he had talked with. I share Slim's thought about, it doesn't make any difference to me who is doing that. But again, I thought it was interesting that the question was posed, and it seems to be like it should be readily available. And if you all could provide that, I'd like to see it, but again.
What we might do is tweak our application form to, if it's an LLC, to list the principals or the officer. In this case, the binding elements were signed by Glenn Miller, President, PSM Enterprises. But I wouldn't know who the other. I wouldn't know who any other folks might be in the, and then, of course, we had a contract vendee on this one of someone to purchase the property, and sometimes that's a corporation, as you know.
Hearing the name, and I know it was in the report, but I would agree with you on your earlier assertion, the Miller family are very good people. I've spent a lot of time with Glenn Miller doing Soapbox Derby, but again, it's not supposed to be about the person.
No, I understand, but they worked hard to try to get a good case. And again, Commissioner Nash, I think what's interesting, when we put the 17 policies under the old plan in front of an applicant, we tell them, meet the test of them. Here they are, give us some binding elements that make you in compliance, and I think they went through and tried to get binding elements to meet every item. The signage, clearly, they made them tighter. They dealt with lighting, they dealt with lot coverage, dumpster screening, so they did attempt to do that. The issue is maybe we needed seven more policies that were stricter, but the 17 policies they met with their 12 binding elements, in our opinion, marginally on three.
I formally make a motion to table the matter for our next meeting.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip to table the meeting, to table the issue to the November 20th, 2012 meeting. We don't have a meeting scheduled for November 6th, Election Day. There's no discussion on a motion to table, so please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
No. That's the last item on the agenda. Again, we'll see you on November 20th. Thank you for tuning in.